Professor, if you're all good, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, sir. All right, we are calling to order the meeting of Citrus Zoning Board of Appeals Thursday, September 21st, 2023 at 7:00 ETM. Citrus Zoning Board of Appeals is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner, even when there is extremely valuable participation for our community. I want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcome and respected. We ask our committee members in all to participate, commit to these standards to support and respect our community. Please note that the Citrus Zoning Board of Appeals meets both in person and through Zoom. The meetings will be recorded, is being recorded, and due on Citrus Community Television and Facebook Live. The meeting will be available the following day on Comcast Channel 9 and YouTube Citrus Community Television. The Zoom notes and the violent instructions are posted on our website. With that, we will call order the first app, hall, first application, which was continued from March 21st, 2023, of D. David Mendez, 37 Holly Road, Citrus, Mass., requesting special permit finding in accordance with NGL Chapter 48, Section 6 and Section 810.1, the Citrus zoning bylaws and/or any other legal or deals made in it, to allow the remodel of a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling on a pre-existing non-conforming lot located in the 38 Holly Road. Yes, applicant, please come up here. You know, what you said, your name and address for the record.
My name is Vladimir David Mendez, live at 37 Holly Road.
Have you seen Dr. Mendez? No, please, just sit down, this is, you can both come up if you're on this application. And please run us through, run us through the application.
Run you through the application?
Yes. Yes, we're asking you to talk to us about the application. What do we have here?
Basically, I live across the street and the time that's 37, 38 is facing me, it is a, it's a real mess. And which, and the person that lived there cannot be, she couldn't build it. I think she went over her limit on time, that verified, that was like 15 or 20 years ago. And all the neighbors are, they're, you know, they're glad that that's something to be done, finally something's gonna be done. I did get the permits to the garage and I had a confidence from Marvin Davis and every how much it does look good. They, the house is a real high store. And I just wanna build up the neighborhood. And a good place to live.
Okay, so we have a non-conforming setback. We have a non-conforming front yard setback. We have an undersized lot and not conforming as the width and frontage, right? And you are looking to basically build, if I understand correctly, the exact same house.
That same house, same footprint, just to be not let out. It's on, there, we can't go in there.
Okay. Bob, am I reading this correctly?
I hope so.
Okay. Cause that's, you understand it the same way I do, right? This is a remodel of an existing fire damage building.
Yeah, two or three years ago, we went before town meeting with an amendment to Section 810.
Right.
Basically, previously had forbidden any activity on property in this situation. After a lapsed period, it ends two years, we changed that to four years. But it was specifically to address situations similar to this, and there are several in town. This is the first one actually coming for the board, and I'm very pleased that it has. In the, in the present bylaw, the board's allowed to grant a special permit, waiving that time of it.
Right.
And that's really all I think you're being asked to do.
Okay, anything else from the board?
Yeah. I'm good.
Okay, anything from the folks here in the room? Yes, sir, name and address for the record, please.
Chris Gardner, 41 Holly Road, I'm Dave's neighbor. This is what Dave is, is efforts to rehab this existing structure. And we have a whole neighborhood full of people that are behind David and here to help tackle him.
Okay, that's, you know, it's wonderful when we hear positive things like that from the neighbors. Sometimes we don't, but it sounds like you want the project, anything from people online?
Did I just say I'm also a neighbor?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, ma'am, I, I.
To rent self for 48 Holly Road.
Yes, ma'am.
And so for Dave, he's been working so hard to keep making that block, get this project ready. And we just wanna see him succeed.
Sure, sir, any other names?
Also a neighbor, John Jackmose, 37 Irving Road, and no dateable long time. He's done a beautiful job on the property so far compared to whatever work that is discussing. So he's done a beautiful job.
Understood. Anything by, oh, and we have Ben Jackmose, who's raising his hand online.
Yeah, just seconding what pretty much everyone else has already said, Dave's a great dude. Everything he's already done to the lot, it looks so much better.
Sure, Mr. Jackmose, your address for the record.
37 Irving, as well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, on that, you want to make a motion, you want me to make a motion?
Make a motion to set the grand special permit finding in accordance with NGL Chapter 48, Section 6 and Section 81.1, by law, on leave, grant, allow the remodel of a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling, a pre-existing non-conforming lot located in the 38 Holly Road, for the plan by Ross Engineering, dated November 2nd, 2022.
And that we find that the proposed rehabilitation for the plan does not introduce any new non-conformities to the extent that it satisfies any existing non-conformity. Such non-conformities are not substantially more than a minimum of the neighborhood. And second, all in favor? All right, granted, sir, good luck with the project. That sounds very deep, why not?
Thank you very.
Thank you very much, okay. All right, Mr. Mendez. Dr. Redd, you got something? Do you need it? You got it, very nice. Sir, good luck, good luck on your version, so fast to meet you, Chris, even speaking, where are you? All right, so with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I wish they were all back in here. All right, on the second application of Aaron Devine, 25 Ocean Avenue, Citrus, Mass., requesting a special permit finding in accordance with NGL 48, Section 6 and Section 810.2A, the Citrus zoning bylaw and/or any other relief that the board appeals may grant to allow construction of an addition to the rear of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on a pre-existing non-conforming lot at 25 Ocean Avenue and increasing the gross floor area by more than 20%. Mr. Redd, good to see you, name and address for the record, please.
My name is Dr. Paul Reddy, from Johnson, Jeremy Company, 33, I'm in the street, I know. The applicant owns
The foundation of especially number three, because that was a building probably nineteen hundred. So I I know it's a different building code back then, if any code at all. But um I fear that the driving piles are going to interfere with the with the stability of the number three. So I don't know how that's going to be addressed. And on the other side, one forty-three Glazer Road. There's a septic system which is just a couple of feet away from the property line. So I you're gonna be driving piles on both sides. So I'm wondering how that that interferes with septic systems and the capacity for that system to work. So.
I I am not a septic engineer. I assume that the septic the septic will be done appropriately.
Well, I'm concerned about how the pile driving the vibrations from them, what is it gonna do to the houses on both sides? Because it's only three feet apart.
I I can speak to that not authoritatively, but kind of anecdotally. There are only a few people in this area that do this type of work pile driving.
Right.
Um they're all very aware of the situation that this gentleman speaks about.
Sure.
And um I've seen many, many projects. That need to drive piles as close to adjacent properties as this this one will.
Right.
Um I have spoken more with one of the people who do this than than some of the others. But I know his equipment is specially designed um and very expensively designed. To not drive the piles, but to vibrate piles.
Right.
And so you're not pounding with this huge weight, getting hammer blows. You're getting a vibration that will slowly slip the pile into the earth. And I think that's the most likely scenario. Uh there's also insurances involved in any of this type of work.
The builders, right, the builders that take on these jobs are experienced with these kind of jobs. Uh it's safe to assume that this guy's going in with plenty of li- plenty of experience, plenty of liabilities insurance to cover. Anything that could happen, but he's probably not his first project.
No, I understand that in uh social piledriving, he's probably gonna be the 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 someone who's gonna do it. He does an excellent job. But the problem is for the house number three is built in nineteen hundred. And that foundation is secure right now, but how would be when they 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 drive the piles? And I say that because they built the house on the other side of me. And on my far side, it created a sinkhole in the ground. So the vibrations certainly travel through through the ground down.
It's worth the con- it's worth the conversation with social pilot. He's probably the 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 local expert, you know, he'd be authority on that in this area.
The next question would be more um the demolition of the house. And I'm wondering how that's accomplished, because there's roads on both sides of the house. There's no, there's no give, eat eat away. Uh there was just a new water line put in on one side. And that is a concern whether that would be crushed by the weight of the equipment coming over. Um on the 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 side until the nav is a power line coming down. So I doubt you'd be able to crush the house on that that side. So it's just a question, and I think it needs to be addressed. Um. What type of house is it going to be? Is it gonna be a a modular house? Like they did on um, I think it's eighty-three and eighty-five Glazer Road. Uh where it comes in on a trailer and it's lifted over, or is it gonna be stick built in place?
There's there's there that's not before this board, how they construct the house, as long as it follows the building code, is permitted, assuming.
Well, sure, well, building codes will 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 do. But it's a question of the time and how they block the roads so that people have access to their property. Um and um. There's there's no place to store equipment or supplies down there. There's no no place to store the lumber, there's no place to uh store any of the construction equipment. And that's a concern. We we live down there year round, uh there's plenty of activity going in and out. And I'd like some answers before, you know, we give a guard again.
If I'm, if I'm, if you want to answer some of those questions. The applicant owns multiple properties in this neighborhood. He has the ability to store materials and equipment in other properties.
Could you speak up a little bit?
The applicant owns pro- other properties in this neighborhood and has the ability to store equipment and materials, the other properties during construction.
A mile away.
Much less than that.
So would that not block any of our roads?
Well, I I can't tell you right now, sir, whether the roads anywhere is gonna be blocking the roads, right? Because they have nothing to construct. What's before this board is whether the request, right, meets the zoning bylaws and appropriate under the zoning bylaws. It still needs to go to the conservation commission.
Yeah.
Right, who will opine on things like the height of the building, right? And then it has to be subject to a building permit, right, which which includes a number of things, right?
Including including sign off by the fire department.
Exactly, that's where I was going.
And this and other public safety eyes.
Which which would address things like the roads being blocked, uh too many materials being on site that might cause a fire hazard. Those kinds of things would be addressed in those kinds of sign offs.
Question on the board, have any fellows been down to inspect this property?
I have, yeah. So the building department has, we have not.
Oh, okay, because it's very, very tight down there.
Yeah. So we.
Yeah, so the only way either way.
Yeah, well, we we understand that, because in in fact, it's over the uh property line in one direction.
Yes.
Right, and it's uh, you know, in less than, you know, it's mere inches or an inch and a half on the other direction. Which I would assume the building and property owners would want to uh to care. Right, any other question? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Mary O'Meara from one forty-three Glazer. Um we had an old bad problem. Husband's family is on that property seven three years. We rebuilt in nineteen eighty. Uh my concerns are, I know you you spoke about the septic system and that's a border health issue, I understand that. But I was, it's within less about four feet away from where the pines will be driven in. And I'm concerned about the the um the status of our septic system. The other thing is our back entryway into our house is about two and a half feet from where the current pylon is right now. Uh so I'm obviously concerned about any damage. And when it's the, when we built our house in nineteen eighty, um the uh rule then was that you had to put in the foundation. So I'm concerned about the the uh integrity of the current foundation that's there with the pines that go in. Now, I know you tell me that with the company, it's, you know, the vibrations or whatever, of the way that they do things. Well, I I was there when they were putting pines in some of the houses down there recently, and it's not a vibrate, it's a bang. It's it's jamming it into the ground. And I'm just concerned about our house and uh and and the foundation. More so than I, and I understand they have insurance, but I just want my concerns to be noted.
Right here.
In the event that it will happen, because it's so close.
And and.
And also, when the bu- abuders were originally notified with this property.
Yeah.
We were told that it was gonna be a one bedroom.
Uh. That's what we're hearing right now.
Right, and it was going to be um a renovation of the current structure. And it was gonna be a seasonal home. And that has, that what was told to us originally, right, right?
When I permitted the tight tank, that's what I said.
And so suddenly that's changed, and I'm just wondering why? And was that the original intent to begin with? And.
It's evolved over time, because as the property owner who recently had acquired the property. Immediately prior to us permitting a septic system tight tank there. You know, learned the property was in more disrepair than he thought. It needed to be brought into FEMA compliance. It was gonna trigger substantial improvement. Because the value of the building, if it goes up more than fifty percent. You're required to bring it into FEMA compliance, which is what's required with pines. Now, the value of the building that's there as it sits today is extremely low. So you touch anything on it and it it's essentially what triggers this. Now, during that tight tank permitting, we could hear the concerns about parking down there being a big one. This property has no driveway, has no place to park a vehicle. This resolves that major concern that was raised. Uh it also alleviates that tight tank. So it seemed like the best option, and that's why we presented these new plans.
I mean, he doesn't in- investigate his projects thoroughly before starting, because we want to be expensive, building these tight tanks. And now he discovered that the uh the house has got fire.
Well, it's.
Doesn't seem to be very responsible.
Uh I would note for the neighbors that are looking at this plan, I'm looking at uh Google Maps equivalent. Um and this house as it stands, I am no expert, um is a complete fire hazard. So if it is not brought into compliance, moved away from the lot lines and fireproof walls put in place. You know, I good luck to anybody that lives down there. We've seen what happens in in the community when when things like that happen. All right, thank you for. Hey, folks, uh I I will, I I will hear all comments. Please keep them to any new issues you would like to raise, because we have nine items on the docket tonight. Um so let's name that this one.
Bill and Susan Murphy, one forty-five R R Glazer Road. So we are in the driveway that is on the other side of Tilden.
Sure.
And Bill Graham referenced this a few minutes ago. Um we did something similar, and we and our three neighbors were required to put a new water line all the way up. To Glazer Road a few posts really back. Um and so the the new water line, substantial costs. The town would not, even though we're a private way, would not foot the bill, because we are considered a private way with no public access. That's what we're considered. And that actually comes from John Buckley Bridge for D to consult with him. So we had to put our new water line. So we're very concerned about the integrity of our water line, about what's going to happen with this. Uh yes, it's four feet underground, but we know that heavy equipment um has incredible weight and can affect things. And how long this project takes and where the access points are for the teardown, for the pines going in, for the, you know, everything that needs to happen. We have, right, we're on a private way, and we have a brand new water line that three neighbors and us. Um had to expense out of our own parks, not through the town. So that's our major region concern, along with.
Very helpful.
The.
Yeah, please.
Uh I think the, for all of your concerns. And I and I hear, I understand what you're talking about. The the greatest asset you have is your neighbor, Mr. Dory. Ask him who's who's going to do the work. And then call the contractor and say, hey, I have a concern about my water line. And he'll let you know, you know, how he's gonna do it, and how he's gonna protect your water line and whatnot. Don't be afraid to ask him, you know, it's not, it's outside of our purview to. Um go into how they're going to, how the contractor is going to perform at the site. Our, the zoning board, we do zone.
Right, I understand.
It needs support.
But somebody in the town, it is under their purview, not just up to the contractor. He does what he. The buil- the building department, the building department and public, right, and and fire, right, police. Right, they all have, and the health department for the septic, right? There's there's all different departments, and in this case, the water mission, but all have a piece of this within their purview. Right, at the end of the day, at the end of the day, if the contractor fails in their responsibilities, right? And they cause harm, that is a private right of action. Right?
And that being said, as my husband said, the the road was deemed by the town, which is why we had to pay to have that water line put in. As a private with no public access. So in theory, they should not be even taking the trucks and machinery down that way, because it's a private.
Well, that's only about a theory. I think that's.
Right. Thank you.
That's what we were told.
Okay.
That's why we asked.
Right, yes, ma'am.
Um Heather Spray, one thirty-nine Williams Road. So uh my mother and I live across from this property and share the Tilden Ave. Um ingress and egress from our property. And I'm just uh wondering if you have the authority, you know, there are always concerns about damage to people's surrounding property. In in deciding whether to permit this variance, do you have the.
It's not a variance.
Okay.
Okay, it's a special permit.
Special permit, okay. Do you have the authority to require them to post any kind of a bond to protect the neighboring properties from damage?
Not not in this particular case. They they should be, they should meet the the requirements of a licensed contractor. And they should provide whatever insurance that they're gonna provide. Ultimately, uh again, you have a private right of action against the homeowner and the contractor that is damaging your property.
And um other question I had is, is I just wanna make sure I understand the process. So right now, it's approved for six hundred, or it has a six hundred gallon tight tank. And there were deed restrictions of a one bedroom and a seasonal use. And now you're approving um them to raise it and rebuild. It's still gonna be a one bedroom, but there's currently no seasonal restriction in place. And they're gonna try to get fifteen hundred gallon septic. But if that's not approved, what happens to what you've just authorized?
So uh couple of things, Bob, I didn't see any deed restriction here.
Although I would have been through the board of health on this.
Right.
I don't have a personal knowledge of it.
It was because of, right, it's the more.
The deed, the deed re- the deed restriction is a requirement of the tight tank being restored, that it was going to be used as a seasonal.
So they don't use a tight tank, right?
For, correct, if they don't use a tight tank and it's a standard septic system. That's a different order of house approval and would not have a deed restriction. For purposes of this meeting, the zoning bylaw does not differentiate between a seasonal residence or a non-seasonal residence, but structures that.
Exactly.
So until the builder gets permission to change the existing, because it is a tight tank right now. So that is still deed restricted unless and until they get permission to change it to a fifteen hundred gallon.
It is, it is a seasonal residence because of the tight tank, because of the separate deed restriction associated, right? Uh and once that is converted over to a one bedroom septic, right, so this will be a one bedroom house. And that's what we're not to approve, right? Um then that's what it's gonna be. And it will go through building department, it's gonna go through conservation. Um and whoever else needs, you know, obviously, board of health is gonna need to sign off on the ability to do that.
And can I make sure that we receive notice of all of these future hearings? Is there like a service list that I can get on?
Uh so all the hearings are posted on our website. And each uh department, right, for example, for zoning, right, abuders get notice of the hearings, et cetera. Uh whatever, whatever is appropriate in that for that particular hearing, the appropriate people will get notice.
Okay, okay.
Uh anybody online?
No.
Okay.
I just wanted to, the town is now um is uh keeps a paper in each individual office. And you can scan it on your phone and sign up for email alerts for all the um things that are going on, so might want to do that as well.
So is that the same one on, for example, on the door when you came in?
Yes.
There's a big QR code on that. So did know, and gee.
No.
All right, anybody wanna make a motion? You want me to make a motion? I will make a motion, sorry. All right, on the application, P four Realty Trust requesting a special permit finding in accordance with NGL chapter forty-eight, section six. And section eight, ten point two and four, seven, eight point six after the city zoning by law. And or any other relief that the board of appeals may grant to allow the raise and rebuild of pre-existing non-conforming single-family home. At one Tilden having a Citroen mass pursuant to the plan by Morse Engineering dated August tenth, twenty twenty-three. Uh I move that a special permit be granted and that this board find that uh such raise and reconstruction is not uh. Uh into, I'm sorry, that such rate and reconstruction does not create any new non-conformities, conformities. And to the extent it intensifies any existing non-conformities, such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. On favor.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'll take that.
All right.
Pretty great. Thank you, Mr. President.
Please, no.
Should get it on you.
Okay.
Well, if you get it, it's still there right to have you right now, just there.
Um. We will be following the fourth application of Dana and Christie Clark. Fourteen East Redan Row and Citroen now requesting a permit finding in accordance with NGL chapter forty-eight, section six. And section eight, ten point two of Citroen zoning by law. And or any other relief that the board of appeals may grant to allow the construction of an addition. For previous, pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling of a big amount of non- like open, you can hear me have a Citroen mass. Hi, name and address for the record, please.
Uh Dana Clark, I'm the homeowner of fourteen.
Okay, good evening. I'm Heidi Pondon of H C Design. We live a family four on Hill Gate here in Citroen, and I work at one four east at Cross Street.
That's all. Uh okay, folks, run us through the project, if you will.
So this is in a very dense harbor neighborhood at the corner of East Redan and Jericho Road.
Yeah.
Almost all of the neighbors on both sides of the street have pre-existing non-conforming lots, as well as stuff. Um Dana and his wife Christie are a young family. They are bursting at the seams. We are adding small additions that do not increase any of the existing non-conformities. We would like to rebuild existing deck, which is not, part is non-conforming, and we're holding the same on from some nothing increases. Existing non-conformities. We spoke with our neighbor immediately to the right, Charlene Richards. She's with full approval of the project. And um our feeling is it's not detrimental to the neighborhood. It was built in nineteen hundred. Very simple construction. We're staying in the vernacular of the cottage style, with the elevations. And we're just looking for a little bit more space, and we are over twenty percent square footage to carry on.
So you're going from approximately just under thirteen hundred square feet.
The eighteen of.
Here, eighteen of four, right?
On two floors.
Right, over both floors, it is currently a two-story house.
Yes.
You're not, are you, you're not changing the roof line, the height?
I'm below the existing, I'm at or below the existing, we're flying some additions. I'm not increasing the height.
Of the existing, that's, that's what I was trying to, plus out, okay? Um very clear. Uh straightforward for me. Bob, questions, comments?
Nope.
Okay.
Looks good.
Board?
Nothing.
Ma'am, name and address for the record.
Uh Linda Ferguson, um from the Institute of Harvard, across the street, seven B and A.
Sure.
All right, um I I don't have anything to say about the building at all. My only concern is there was another build in the area uh recently. And their contractors, vendors, deliveries, everybody seemed to think that the hotel parking lot was uh public accessible. And so every day I had to play parking lot attendant.
Sure.
I like to avoid that.
Yeah.
I know that this space is tiny. I mean, you know, we do try and work with people on rare occasion, but this was, this went out for months. And it it still wells. I actually am not even sure if that's supposed to be brought up here, so based on.
Well, we did, we did, well, we like, I I think it's important that you voice that, right? I don't think that these folks have any intent along those lines. I am sorry that happened to you. Of course, nobody, the this board that was not in support of anything like that, as you can imagine. I'm sure the building department was, I'm sure the police and fire department, right? Um so I'm sorry about that. Um and again, in situation, this is great situation. Now the homeowner is here, the homeowner now understands that. I'm sure the homeowners will communicate that to their contractors. Um and if they need to avail themselves of some of your wonderful services, they will do so only if permission is granted. Uh I'd like to make that.
Um we do have a side yard.
Right.
Kind of where we plan to store.
Some of the materials.
Lumber, and women on the opposite side from the driveway.
Okay.
So we do have that kind of pie-shaped piece that we we definitely can use for street, just high defense, so no one will see it necessarily.
Wonderful.
Or be protected.
And 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 I'm sure to let the contractors know that that's not public parking.
Yeah.
That's a parking of a.
I will put that on my white back.
Of a business, right? Um but again, but again, contractors can be uh interesting sometimes. Anybody on, so that's room good, okay? Anybody online? No. Do I do this one?
All right.
Uh you know, four.
Motion on the uh application by Dana Clark. For a special permit finding according to NGL forty-eight, section six, and section eight, one, zero, point two, is according to the by law. And you are the other relief from the board of appeal, construct uh addition to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling, a pre-existing non-conforming lot. Per the plan of. Mackenzie Engineering Group dated July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. That if there are, that the plan does not uh produce any new non-conformities, and if there are already existing non-conformities, does not.
Not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood and that the board would grant. Seconded. I'll second it.
Yeah.
On favor?
All right.
Thank you very much.
I think. Did we change? I don't want to do it. I'll take mine. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, uh all right, we are off to our fifth application. Uh of Michael and Claire Wonkum. Sixteen checkmate Citrus requesting a special permit finding in accordance with NPL chapter forty-eight, section six. Um. And section eight, ten point two of the zoning bylaws and or any other relief that the board may grant. To allow the construction of an addition with three fifty non-conforming single-family dwelling, dwelling at Wonkum and Euro Citroen. You welcome back? Name and address for the record.
Again, for the record, Gregory Morse, registered engineering, Morse Engineering, representing the property owner, Michael and Claire Wonkum. Property is located at one twenty Clap Road. This was just written with the record. We're here seeking a special permit finding in accordance with section eight, ten point two of the by law. And that's general law chapter forty-eight, section six, for work, single-family home at that address. The existing sites in the R one zoning district, a small portion of the site is within the floodplain watershed protection district. Although none of the work is within that district. The existing home of the site, an old one, was built in seventeen seventy-four, approximately seventeen hundred and seven square feet in size. The only non-conformity is the front yard setback. The front yard setback is at seven point eight feet, where thirty feet is the requirement in the district. The proposal here is to construct a new addition off the back of the house. Two-story addition, has a covered porch on the side of it. I shaded that in gray on the plan here, on either side of me. This one. Um the addition itself complies with all setbacks. There are no changes to the front yard non-conforming setback. But it increases the gross floor area of the dwelling to two thousand nine hundred and eleven square feet, which represents a seventy point five percent increase. We feel that the board can approve this, because it's not substantially detrimental to the character of the neighborhood. There are homes of similar sizes. We're not increasing the non-conformity or creating any new non-conformities. Turn it over to you.
Right, uh side yard setback on the left side, that's that's a notation as to your, the addition, right? That's the difference between that and where you have the existing, that's not a complication. You have, you have existing seventy-eight point two on the left side and eighty point six on the proposed.
Correct, eighty point six is proposed on the left.
Right, but that's.
The yes of the existing um on the left side, seventy-eight point two.
Right.
You'll see that there is a wing off the back of the house already that's coming down.
Right.
And then the new addition gets moved over just a little bit.
Right, gets tucked in under that, that's right. So I'm just, I'm trying to understand, I'm just trying to confirm the measurements, that I understand about what's going on here. Uh, and with respect to the original, uh, uh. Uh, old house, I was gonna use a word that I didn't want to use because it has meaning. Um, you're not touching that, basically, right?
It's gonna be renovated.
Right, okay.
Completely, completely renovated. So it keeps internal. They want to keep the historic nature of it, I was just gonna say, you're not touched from the outside, from historic nature, it's not being altered, it's your original, right?
Um, Bob? Uh.
Really, not much to comment on, uh, I think it's a, it's a nice way to allow, uh, an antique.
Right.
I'll use the word, home, uh, part of Citrus fabric for hundreds of years.
Sure.
Continue to exist and serve the needs of a more modern family.
Right.
Um, the only thing I would ask is if there's a, and you know this, it doesn't, an increased number of veterans of Bush left a little at the septic system as well.
Sorry.
We, we are planning a septic upgrade here, we've already done the tests, we haven't submitted a plan yet, but we are planning to do any septic.
Yep. Okay. Well, the conform, appropriately, board?
I'm good.
No questions.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, anyone in the room? Awesome. Anybody online? Awesome. I, I agree with you, Bob, I think this is a, a pretty way to view. Um, and I was, you know, the risk is not, it's just antique, but it's might be, you know, somewhat historic home, so, um, but, uh, that is what it is. And, uh, I think it's a great point. Alright, uh, I'll make a motion. Uh, so, I'm a motion on the application of Michael and Claire Wonkum, sixteen check way. Question, special permit finding in accordance with NPL chapter forty-eight, section six, section eight, ten point two of the Citrus Zone bylaws. Uh, to allow the construction of an addition to a pre-existing nonconforming single family dwelling at one ten Clap Road, Citrus Mass. Pursuant to the plan by Morse Engineering dated August eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Uh, I, the Board finds, uh, that such, uh, addition, uh, is not substantial, uh, such addition does not introduce any new nonconformities. To the extent it intensifies any existing nonconformities, such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, and that the Board would grant special permit.
Second.
On favor?
Ah.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
I got that one.
Yeah? Mm-hmm. Second. Um. You seem to speak of. Uh, that's. Alright, and we will call the sixth application, uh, Leo McDonough, sixteen Salt Meadow Lane, Citrus Mass. According to the septic permit finding in accordance with NGLs, forty-eight, section six, and section four, pointing to Citrus Zone by law, and or any other relief with the Board of Appeal, thank you. To allow the construction of a private garage of more than three vehicles on a vacant lot. At twenty-two Salt Meadow Lane, Citrus past, oh, two, oh, six, Citrus.
Thank you. Attorney Jeff Felice, with the law firm, Felice and Harris here in Citrus. I represent Mr. McDonough, who's here this evening. And, uh, Paul Maravito, of Grady Consulting, also here, any questions? Uh, essentially, this is a vacant lot of Salt Meadow Lane. Uh, zoning bylaw allows, uh, this kind of structure, uh, on issues to the special permit from the Board. Um, the lot is, or the proposed structure meets all the setback requirements otherwise required in the zone. And, uh. Mr. McDonough owns the, uh, lot directly next to it, and, uh. Uh, checking with the building departments, uh, and if. Building like this can be located on its own separate lot. So.
Right, so, so you're not looking to merge the properties and have this as part of it, say, separate, three-car, or a few cars, they go, right?
Yeah, as well as.
Larger.
More, so that's, so that, so that's why I'm asking, how many car garage?
Four car.
Four car garage. Okay. I just wanted to make.
You use a.
Okay, four car garage. Um, and what is, and we have this, I'm just curious, more than any, uh, equal, or curiosity may be relevance. Uh, I understand it's not a dwelling, what is the lot width?
Lot width?
Yeah. Or do we have, um, do you have a lot with? Yeah, so it's a difficult.
Paul, you have any, any idea about that?
Have a second.
Yeah.
Just measure a foot and a half. One. They're completely one with the only best of the zone?
Oh, okay, um, I guess definitionally, lot width is only required in the circumstances where, uh, you're constructing a dwelling.
Right, I understood, I, I got that. And, and I, and I, I thought of you, I'm not saying there's anything wrong here, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out how wide. Sort of the, sort of how wide this lot really is. Because I have a lot of amendments here.
Can I have three, and then leave it to you?
Uh, Paul's looking into that, uh, I just wanted to get to the board that. Uh, we're not seeking to follow septic system, we're not gonna get any water service, and building wreck, and things like that.
Yeah. And so the back of this lot? Back, in north, I'm looking. No, south part, right, because north of down, south part of the lot is in Norwell, right?
Yes, so the property is bisected with the town of Norwell. Uh, the, uh, there's also a separate zoning district on the property. Which is not in the location of where the buildings we propose, that would be the five, the Salt Marsh and Thailand Conservation District.
Right, I see that.
This building is fully proposed within the R one.
Right.
Um, and, uh, there is a theme of flood zone, which also bisects. But on the, uh, in this particular location, there's, the total building is not in the special flood hazard area, it's not flood, not in flood.
So, and so you're removing this shed that's on the plan?
Yep.
So, right?
TBR, to be raised.
Yeah, to be raised, I got it, and the, what I'm not seeing, yeah, this is gonna be me, is how do you, so, salt level lane, you got the. I don't wanna call it, call the sack, but you know, you got the turn, too well, it's a radius. Um, how do you, how are you getting from salt level lane, which I assume is the access to the garage? Where's the, right, can I use the driveway?
So the, so the front of the garage would be the left side of the proposed structure.
So basically with a shed, more or less.
Yes, exactly.
I'm not, yes, we're going, I'm not holding you to that, I'm just, so then you're gonna come in.
Am I correct about that, Leo?
Yes, it's correct.
So, name, name and address for the record.
Leo McDonough, sixteen Salt Meadow Lane.
McDonough, I see you.
Do you have any? You do have the dimensions of a lot on this plan.
Okay.
Which you was including, two hundred and seventy-one length, over a hundred and. Hundred forty-one, forty-three there. And there is a gravel driveway, dirt driveway already there. Uh, off the end of the cul-de-sac, facing by where the shed is.
So, tell me, so.
So, yeah, we have the plans up here. Yep, so this is the proposed garage. It's a, it's a dirt, mostly dirt driveway system, right, right here, right now.
Okay. So, just to, we don't have. On this.
So, there's a shed in it.
Right?
Grab, I have in here, so that's what we're gonna.
Right, and it's the other side, you're looking at it.
Yeah, that's, that's the cul-de-sac.
Right, yeah. That one, right, and they'll be over here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that'll be right.
Um.
Building.
So the dimension, the, the dimensions that Mr. McDonough had just indicated to you on the lot size, in your zoning packet.
Yep.
And that would be part of the record plan that the deed references, so yeah, so it looks like this. Okay, um, as far as the size of the building, uh, the mentions are called out on the plan. Uh, to be forty feet by thirty-four feet.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what it looks like.
Um, the style of the building would be traditional wingman style, a French shingle building.
One floor?
Uh, I believe one and a half, if you storage, you know, storage area about.
It says one, that's why I asked. People could just get all.
Yeah.
Bob? Thoughts?
So the relief being requested is, we think the zoning bylaw says three cars is an maximum size for a garage.
Uh, the relief being requested is because the zoning bylaw does not allow a dwelling to be constructed on this property. Because it's nonconforming, it's upland lot area.
And also, also frontage.
Within.
Just two, few inches.
Not, not inch, a centimeter.
Is.
Um, so. Uh. So, so the purpose here, uh, the reason why we're seeking this movie is in order to construct this building. The, uh, table of, uh, area regulations, or no, table of uses, requires that, um, garages of. Serving more than three vehicles require a special permit.
Okay, right, and that's, and that's all, all the relief that you're asking.
That's all the relief, yeah.
Right, uh, question that maybe, I'm, I'm sure you're gonna, but, uh, kind of lost the track of your zone. Is this intended to be, or is it, is it legally, let's put it that way, an accessory building to the dwelling next door?
So, um, it's intent, it's, so the properties and the two properties are in the same form of ownership.
Right.
So, the answer is that in all that will be a, yes, it will be accessory.
I guess, uh, my bottom line question would be, could this building and the property it's on ever be sold separately from the house to which it's adjacent?
That's why I asked about the, the, the deed merger, right?
Yeah, yeah.
You're telling, right, this looks like it's a separate lot.
I think.
Have it separately, although common ownership.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a separate lot laid out on a plan.
Yeah.
The lot, which is the house lot, is, uh, entirely conforming lot. Um, which is why we're not seeking to merge the properties.
Right.
As far as the question is, um, whether the property could be sold. Um. The answer would be that we would, in all likelihood, I haven't given it like a full analysis, but not likely, we might have come back to the ZBA. If we wanted to do that. I believe. But I'm not sure, like, I have, I hadn't considered that question, I haven't thought of that, oh.
Yeah, the, the question is.
I think it could be solved, I mean, I, I don't, I don't see why not, actually.
Well, the reason would be because of that accessory building has to be accessory, two side angles either continuous or at least adjacent.
But this, this would be a.
But he's not getting, he doesn't like permitted as an accessory dwelling, lost.
Standard accessory dwelling.
Oh, I understand, accessory, accessory.
Well, sorry, well, it's a standalone, it's a primary use in the zoning bylaw. Right?
So that everything is separate, it's an accessory building.
So the reason why it's, the reason why.
That, yeah, so that's, I mean, I understand the question, I think what the request is, is separate and apart. And, and it bears, I spent a couple minutes on it to really understand it, right, as a group. Separate and apart from the existing residence next door, so to speak. There's a lot here, right, it's a separate, it exists separately from that building. Um, the question is, can, on this lot, standing alone. The app can build a four-car garage. Right? And this is.
And I think all you have to do is tick down the special permit criteria that in. In, uh. There's criteria, it was around section nine hundred and fifty, I think. There's on the bylaw.
So we're in part ownership, you build. For this is. So. It's not something. Residential accessory use. But is it an accessory use, right, that's the first question.
Page one eighty-five.
Well, I'm looking at the use category card first.
Just saying, what he's looking for was nine fifty, it's page one eighty-five.
Yeah, so there's no separate, yeah, so there's two separate categories, right? And this is a private garage for more than three automobiles, which is use category H, which is different than a residential accessory use. Which, uh, you would be able to do that in right, in our line. Zoning district, yeah. Right, so this is, is, this is a private garage for more than three automobiles, would require a special permit. And to your point, we're looking at section.
He said.
Section nine fifty.
Yeah. Yeah.
In the last few years, about a hundred days, it's been added for the zone by law.
Yeah. I.
Over vigil lighters? One eighty-nine.
Or?
You looking at the old one, the new one? We got the old.
Good one.
So his name's.
Yeah. He, yeah.
Oh, just, yeah.
He said tick down the, of the talks.
Yeah. I, I don't, I, I absolutely think we have the power to do this, to make the special permit here.
Well, can I ask, is there any historical reference as to why, uh, the line was drawn at what it?
Was wetland, was wet, oh, wetland. Wetland.
No, 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 why, three, why we. Three vehicles. Three, three.
Not, not that I know of.
Oh, versus.
So, you know, if you, if you wanted to do a three-car garage, you wouldn't have to be here, right?
Correct.
It's four-car garage, it's such a question.
It just had. Right. Yeah, had it off somewhere.
Yeah, right.
Right, and then say, alright, special permit, somebody has to look at this, and say, is it really?
We've been, we've been over and around and through that particular issue, wondering if it could be three cars and one book.
Right, exactly, that's right.
So, so Chris, let me get this, move this straight, and what, what I think I hear you saying is, if this was proposed to be a re-far garage. That there would be no need for zoning relief?
That's fine, I'm, it's, it's as far as the use, you know, from the use tape, right? Um.
You don't need a special permit.
You don't, you wouldn't need a special permit.
Right.
We've already said you can, you're within all the setbacks, right?
Yeah, yeah, the building would be, I believe that's correct, would be the front, maybe, again, your, it's lot width is only an issue, it's a dwelling. Uh, it's under, well, so it's, the problem is the existing frontage is not, not conforming. So arguably, that's the reason.
Well, no, it's only nonconforming if you're seeking to build a dwelling on it, so if you look at section six, ten.
Right.
No dwelling shall, here and after be erected on a lot that doesn't have the real life.
Hey, I, I would agree with that.
Right, that's fair.
Also, I think it's clear, very honestly, to go with, uh, a private garage for more than three automobiles, because if you. Back away from that. Uh, definition or, or situation, uh, you're back into a residential accessory use, which this.
Is permitted.
Is really not intended to be.
Right.
Or at least not intended to be solely that for, forever. So if you get a, you get a permit. Based on the, uh, on, on H, category H, I think you're in cleaner waters.
Right. I, I agree, that's, I think that's where we're coming out, because I, we don't, I don't see how this is a residential accessory use in this particular situation, but, you know, you want four automobiles here, you are, you can apply for a special permit. And this is fundamentally one point two acres. Yeah, yeah, like the stories, the upland story.
But, but we're home, so I can only look at the, the upland.
The upland, right, yeah, yeah, no, but again, from, from whether, the effect on the neighborhood, right, you still have a lot of available open space. That's what I'm sorry, right, I understand, builtability for residents is a problem, that, that's pretty clear here.
All right, any to the point of if it could be sold separately, like, you know, Jeff was saying, they have to come back here.
Well, no, I, I.
If they want to change it from a garage to anything else.
Oh, right, different.
Yeah.
That's it, but if it's something, I guess.
If it were, if it were accessory, but if it's freestanding, you can come back here.
No, no, to sell the garage to somebody else, they can use it as a profit, if they wanted to turn it into a house. My, my thought is, somebody would want to buy this and turn it into a house.
If you were to, if anybody were to attempt to use this as a dwelling or as an accessory dwelling, relief would be necessary from, in the dwelling case, ZBA, and in the accessory dwelling case, finding a place.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Yeah, which is why we were careful to not propose any water service to the building, so, because there have been instances in the town that I've been involved in and aware about, that there have been garages proposed.
Sure, and people can learn about.
That people put bathrooms in, and then there's kind of gray area.
Yeah, it becomes a creeping problem, right, that turns into a studio, art studio, then that, somebody's living there.
Yeah. So we're, we're trying to kind of.
Yeah, so there's no, there's no, there will be power, of course, to this garage, but no water service, no gas service, right?
I, I don't know about gas, I mean, they might want to need it, but they might need it.
Okay, but no water service yet, okay.
So, so the way I see is, once, once we've determined that a special permit is required, it's just a question, straight up analogous to whether the, the non fifty point three criteria are satisfied. You wait, which is that the board shall be assured that the site is, specific sites appropriate location for the, the use instructor, that use developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood, that there will not be undue nuisance or serious hazards of vehicles or pedestrians, that, that adequate, appropriate facilities would be provided, and that there would not be any significant impact on public or private water supply.
Right, and it's not.
Not in water resource protection.
Right, it's not, and it's outside of the high land, right?
Yeah.
Because of the public location. Bob, anything else?
No, I would also note that this garage could not be used, as I agreed, for commercial vehicles.
That is correct, because that's not the request.
Well, it isn't, but even if it will return to the board for a change, it still would not meet the criteria of section four forty, and it, it's, there's a this right here, section four forty point two is about marijuana.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Four forty point three is actually the section we're referring to. So it can't be, can't be in, in commercial use for storing commercial vehicles.
So we would be, we would be approving a special permit for a private garage, not commercial vehicles.
Then, that's fine, that's close to the end of the process. The public in the room, this man, name and address to the record.
Kathleen Palomary, seventeen, fifteen, excuse me, fifteen, South Meadow Lane.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions for the board, have you reviewed the conservation findings for both situated and normal for this property?
So, where this proposal is, where the proposal is, it is not in conservation plan.
Okay, so it's not, okay.
It's not in the wetlands, it's completely down, it's not even in our full marking file of conservation.
Okay.
It's, it appears to be, I have to do believe, free of those restrictions, according to.
I have another question, I can't quite, you know, because I want to be a subjective thought.
Sure.
My husband, Jake, would it?
Eric, fifteen, South Meadow Lane, sure, has any of the board been down there and looked at this property? No, you should all take a ride down and take a look at it, because I can see in the future what, what it's going to be, a junkyard. Lieutenant Dunne is a junk boy, he has four or five boats in that yard, he's got a backhoe in there, he's cut down all the trees, he's had thirty, forty truckloads of fill up in there.
What, you're saying they have a garage?
Pardon me? Oh, I didn't hear you say what.
I said all the more reason to have a garage.
Look at us for the time.
Yeah, you, you could look at it that way if you didn't live across the street, like we do.
And there's children, although they don't live in the neighborhood, it's Mr. Dunne, it's rental properties. Number sixteen has been rental property for about three years now, and it's fine, but no tenants have.
That's his business.
But there are also children that are there with grandparents, and we have a toddler, and there's an exposed backhoe, which I understand is legal to have. But it, there's just a lot of things, I'm an old trauma nurse, I've seen things happen.
Sure.
And something could happen there, I'm worried about, I'm not worried about it, but I've been concerned about it.
So, so you're.
And I don't know if that comes under your daily work or not, but, yeah.
Maybe, yeah, that might, that's a good, that's a good point, so thank you, thank you. Let me, anybody online that has a comment? Yes? Stefan?
Hi there, Stephen DeMar, seven, Salt Meadow Lane, I have a young family on the cul-de-sac as well. And I guess my concern is, and I think some of this discussion kind of covered it, but just kind of wanted to raise the concern down the road of having a larger, freestanding, independent garage on a pretty family, quiet residential street, and the potential for, as it was even discussed, potential creep of what that becomes, whether it's a semi-professional or even, you know, hobby shop type item in a residential space, so, I guess, keeping it attached to the main dwelling is maybe where I was hoping to go, so that we didn't have a lot that could be used solely for storage or garage purposes, so.
So, so that's, thank you for that, and makes an interesting point, because the requested permit would be for a private garage, specifically not for commercial purposes, right, because to Bob's point, they don't meet the requirements for that, and that does not seem to be the request here, but we, I think we're hearing you folks, that there's some current concerns about how a lot is being used. Fair? Fair, not exactly a zoning issue, right, because we're talking about what permitted future uses can be. But, but we, we hear you, I think, and, and your concern seems to be that you're worried about scope creep, and scope creep specifically in a commercial nature, right? I mean, you're saying backhoes, you're seeing construction.
Well, I don't, I don't think the backhoe is used for commercial use, it's more, I don't know, I can't speak to that.
Well, when you say a backhoe, I don't know, I mean, I'm assuming a backhoe.
Mr. McDonough means that, I don't, it's more, I haven't seen him leave the yard, or I don't know. He owns the backhoe, he owns, it's still backhoe.
Sure, speak to that, everyone wants, yeah, please.
So, name and address.
Leah McDonald, sixteen, South Meadow Lane. So, yes, I've got the backhoe there, which I own, and bought it for this purpose of, to clear the land and clear the foundation to build my, my garage. I'm a car enthusiast, getting close to retirement, looking to build my dream garage, where I can, as Stephen said, to have a hobby shop. There's no commercial intent ever, but, but as my neighbors know, I like to work with my hands, and that's what I'm seeking, is to build this four car garage, it's too wide, too deep, it's not terribly large, and to, yeah, that's what I want to do in my retirement, is work on my, hopefully move back into the house and work on my, my old collector box.
You understand, you're in the residential, our one zone, there are certain specific uses and things like that, no commercial uses, all those things.
Yes, sir.
You know, we, you know, along with the ability to grant a special permit, we have the ability to request condition. I'm looking at a picture of the property taken back April of twenty twenty-three. You got stuff, and I, I probably have just as much stuff, could you put a fence around it?
I could, could put a fence around it, I did initially want to put this further back, normal, he claimed.
Right.
So, I could put a fence around it, but what you're looking at is, is two boats there, and a lot of timber that came from that property, which I was hoping to, you know, use for siding.
You can have as much stuff on your property as long, as long as it's neat and whatever, it doesn't create a hazard, so, I mean, I'm not saying you can't have it, but they're saying, they're saying to look at it, so.
And, and they're, they're making, they're making a commentary about, because we learned in law school, a thing called a practical nuisance, right, there are children in the neighborhood, right, these, these are not, yeah, they're not, they're not, it's not fenced in, right, there's some, there's some other concerns that aren't directly related to the, to the garage, but maybe we can address sort of two things at once here.
Can I say one more?
Absolutely.
So, in an attempt to keep my stuff out of view of the neighborhood, they know I've been putting up all kinds of, I've been planting evergreens, so they're green year round, and that one little dirt driveway that has access, I have four large, rather large potted evergreens, in an attempt to keep everything behind, you know, green shrubs and green trees. And this, this is in process right now, and it's, yes, there's, there's a lot of lumber there, and they could consider that an eyesore, I've got two boats that are covered, and ideally those will all be pushed farther back when this project is done, and the rest really are this timber, fell trees from native to that property that I'd like to use some way or form in construction. So, that's, so.
That's my, this is a good deal.
So, attempt to keep it clean and outside.
Thank you.
So, I don't know that we were. I'm trying to read the board a little bit, and I don't think anybody's against the idea behind a private garage. The, I think, question, because of the nature of the neighborhood, and some of the issues that have been raised, can we, we, we'd like, I think, a little bit, put in some conditions that give us some level of assurance, right, that whatever happens. Yeah, yeah, there, there, something, yeah, something like that, where, where, where there was some fencing to prevent, you know, some risk, right, to give some screen to the neighbors. Obviously, this, this gets put, this party, private garage, not commercial, this, right, that's clear, we don't have scope creep along those lines. Where, 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 as you can hear, it's miring up here, amongst ourselves a little bit, where they're thinking about fencing, maybe some fencing.
Can, can we?
Yes, sir.
So, your, your house is the lot, we're thinking a fence that kind of locks, you know, somewhere along the line, so that's why this house.
That's my house.
Well, this is.
Just so.
This is not.
That's the, that's Palomary, I have to use this. So, the property, no, it's property here, right?
Yes, sir.
This is heavy as property here, but we only have their jointing company, exactly.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Correct, you could just do that way, and, I mean, I, I can put up a fence, but I think all the green shrubery that.
Subject to conservation.
Yeah, I get on, well, so that's a.
And I think what you're, what you're asking for is a, is a buffer, right? You know, the maintenance of a natural vegetated buffer strip, if there is one, or some kind of planting of a buffer, or you're talking obviously about the alternative of a fence. Any activity, any activity within a hundred feet would be required, I think, well, any jurisdictional activity, I agree, would have run by the conservation. Oh, understood.
Yes, ma'am?
There is a, Mr. McDonough owns a strip of property, deed of rights down to the river, and I believe there's a water line that was filming, goes down the drainage of Neil Gate. I, we no longer have a boat, I would like to have that preserve neighbors and not have that fenced in, so we couldn't get down, down to the boats.
No problem.
You sure?
Promise.
Promise?
Right, so the.
I, I like this deed, because each one of the properties, except for one in the neigh, two in the neighborhood, have deed of rights, right, plot and plan and everything, goes right down from the end of the cul-de-sac down to the river. And one of the things that runs down this path is water pipes from Neil Gate, drainage was down there. Because it's a private home, it doesn't, we get, we get plowed out, which is good, but nothing, the drainage was falling down, the town didn't come and fix that. So, the thing I, I guess what I'm getting at, roundabout way is, my husband and I are obviously older, no longer have a boat, we sold it this year, but for our neighbors that have paid and have this on their property, to this deed of rights, would like that to be protected for our neighbors, probably as far as fences, fencing goes, I don't want to see a fence to go across this and then down the far side of it.
So, if they have an easement across this property.
My husband.
You can't obstruct there.
Right, you see the drainage here.
Okay, so in this, this, that, right, the solid line below.
So, if a fence were to go in, not here, it would be here, I'm, the problem.
Yes, sir.
They would have access, access to the.
As long as they have deed of rights, the access can't be obstructed unless.
Okay, I just want to make sure that it's, because these things, they're, they're, they're erroneous, and I want to make.
Well, I mean, look, I, I, go ahead.
I understand the board's practical issues, and cer- certainly willing to work with them, but I just wanted to remind the board that we're here for a building, a garage.
Okay.
And what we're talking about is the on-site nature of the property, which is jurisdictionally the board of health under the state sanitary code.
Understood, and, and I, I'm not arguing with you on that, but remember.
I, I understand, but I wanted to.
No, one of our criteria is not substantially more than limited to the neighborhood, right, we're trying to solve for a couple of things here, and, and I agree with you, there, there are future potential issues that people might have, and I, and I do acknowledge that.
Because the distance of that property from the cul-de-sac to the rear property line is two hundred and fifty feet, so that, so I know Mr. McDonough is willing to construct a fence, but I don't think the two hundred and fifty feet distance.
And, you know, and that's, and that's just, it's a visual screen, so, it keeps the neighbors happy. Two hundred and fifty feet downwards, no, it's down there, look at that. It keeps the neighbors out. Two hundred and fifty feet down, what's, no, it's down there, look at that, if they are, that's their own. You know, and this is a friendly buffer, you know, so he can have a separate garage. And those neighbors are in the.
Absolutely. So the other challenge that we're posed with is, is, so. The record, to, I'm sorry, what's your name there?
Kathleen.
To Kathleen's point, this plan is part of the package.
Yeah.
Okay. Is the record plan, to which the deed references, so on that plan, you will be able to see. The location of this easement, which Kathleen refers to. And it, it extends from the very center of the end of the cul-de-sac. You can see the property boundary in solid line, and then you can see above and below the solid line of dash lines. So this easement is seven and a half feet on the east side of. The property boundary, and seven and a half feet on the west side. So what Kathleen has indicated is that she would like to keep that open, and she's requested that a fence be constructed. Such that it would be. On the inside.
If a fence were.
If, if a fence were constructed on the inside of the seven and a half feet, so on the building side. The proposed building side of seven and a feature. That essentially is almost in a sense, from a private property perspective, giving up seven and a half feet of middle property. And I just want to make the board this challenge to listen to, listen to the concerns of the public. And condition this, but also balance that against the rights of a private property owner. And I'm, I'm wondering if maybe what we can do is agree to say. A vegetative buffer along the. Westerly line of that easement. That.
Yeah, along, okay.
Right, so. For, which has, you know. I think there needs to be some break in it, maybe, of some sort, now.
Of what, like a fifty feet or something?
Yeah, maybe just.
Not the entire.
Of, of a length of fifty feet and, and length, extending from the road back. That, that might work. I, I'm wondering, Leo, what your thoughts are on that?
And when I say a vegetative buffer, I mean like an arbor by. I'm fine with that. I put up a fence if that's what they want. I don't prefer a fence. I've been, I planted over sixty. Leyland cypress, future greens, that brought from, heard, I hear from Jennifer, your daughter. Cedars in the property to, now, but they planted them small, but they're already getting larger, they're much larger. It's been a wet summer, to become a natural buffer. And this has been underway for the last couple of years. I've, I've wrapped them during the winter to beat the deer away from them in the snow, so I've already started this.
And of course, any condition would have to be subject to, to, you know, conservation.
Go ahead.
Bob and I were the house next to it, property, the seventy.
Twenty-one Salt Metal Lane.
Thank you.
It's the easement that goes down. It's not according to the, the, the seven and a half feet of this and seven and a half feet, because the easement was put there. Long before the houses almost, and so there's a road that goes right straight down there. To where it's supposed to be, and we don't want to see that changed. Leave the road the way it is. Yeah, don't, don't change that. Are you planning on changing the road?
Well, I'd like to talk about that. So it's not a road, it's a path.
It's a path.
It's an easement, it's deed, it's an easement. And it's not, Mr. Curry's correct, it shows seven and a half feet on this property, seven and a half feet on my property.
Right.
However, it's entirely on my property.
Oh, I see, the path is really just.
Yeah, you've got your shed, basically, your shed, and all your crappy windows and all that other stuff. Those old windows that.
It's on my, it's on your property, it's not the seven and a half.
The bo- the, the bottom line is that we're not. You're the ones who are conditioning this. We're acceptable with conditions similar to what we talked about, and we're certainly not proposing. To obstruct the pathway.
Right.
Yes, and, and we would certainly agree to a condition that that not occur.
The easement, the easement's the easement. It is what it is, where it's supposed to be, where the path currently is, I, we have no control over. And to the extent that stuff is on that easement that impedes travel down to the water. It should be removed. I have no, we have no authority over that, but I just would remind people that it's, right, that's what it is. Not supposed to impede easement. All right, on that note, oh, we have, we have one person online, and again, please, we have a couple more cases. To the extent that your issues have been addressed, great, to the extent that we have new stuff to talk about, please raise your hand.
Thanks. Stephen DeMar, seven Salt Metal Lane, just to the couple of comments, just to kind of, in support of Leo, the, the. Artificial buffer, or natural buffer, excuse me, he's put in his awesome, it's really good, and, and I, I think he's doing a lot of work to try to support. The, support, putting the stuff into a garage, which I, I think I'm, I'm definitely in favor of. I guess my, my, my point a little bit more of was, in the hopes this is a retirement dream garage. And wants to live there, the intent is not to sell, would we merge the lots for that purpose? To grant their permission?
No, murder me. No, I mean, this is a separate, i- i- it is a separate lot, it has a separate purpose. Again, where it's located, it's also not commercial, just to be clear, so to sell that. Separately from any residence. Unless it's sold to somebody that lives in that neighborhood and has extra cars, makes most. Right, because it's not for commercial purposes. So I just want, I, I'm just making, sort of stating the obvious here. But if, the, the request is for a residential garage, four car garage, or a residential garage. Forty feet by thirty four feet per, per the plan, which is fundamentally a four, too deep, too wide garage, right? All right. Last one on this, because we're going around in circles, but yes, ma'am, please.
There's no street to go park the cars in, there's no access to go in there, acceptable with that.
No, they would have to make a curb cut. Right, they would, they would have to make a path from the cul-de-sac to the garage.
And I had a picture of women passing this path in the, in the circle of the tap every day, and.
Well, there, there you go.
I know, not in front of our air blocks, yeah.
I, I believe everybody else said that the weather, that are ready, or that there was at least access to gravel, to the shed.
Yeah, and they would have to be some access to that garage, right, and so.
Right, probably like to use the existing dirt driveway that's there.
No, that's what, was used, what, right there.
That's strange.
It was a salt, it was salted area.
No.
Right, so, and, and that's my problem.
All right. Bob, any more on this that we're missing from our discussion?
No.
Okay. What do you guys? All right, let's see what we can do on that. Yeah, I got it, all right. All right, so this. This is our thick ass, we've got to do more after this. So on the application of Leo McDonald, the McDean Salt Metal Lane, City of Matt, requesting special permit in accordance with NGL. Forty eight, section six, and section four twenty of the city zoning bylaw, to allow the construction of a private garage. For more than free vehicles on the current vacant lot at twenty-two Salt Metal Lane, pursuant to the plan. By rated consulting dated August tenth, twenty twenty-three, wherein the proposed private garage is thirty-four feet by forty feet. And wherein, the applicant will create a vegetative buffer. On the westerly line, along the westerly line of the easement. Of, of the easement on his property. Running approximately fifty feet from Salt Metal Lane. Right, towards the proposed private garage. Of course, I'm not, I say towards, in a southerly, in a southerly direction, sorry. Southerly direction. I move. That the board approves such special permit under those conditions. And that the board find that such a garage does not create any non-conformities. And to the extent it interferes with any existing non-conformity, such interference would not substantially more detriment to the neighborhood.
I'll second it. May I ask before you vote?
Yes.
Just want to, if the board is assured as to the findings in section nine fifty, I would like to incorporate it into the vote. You don't need to read them, just instead of.
Yes, and, and that the board is satisfied with the requirements of section.
Nine fifty point three.
Nine fifty point three, which. Second. All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're going to write it off?
Yeah, I'll write it for you, how about that? Leo, I'll see you.
So, you're standing. You're standing. Are you on the hand? So, so folks, thank you. Folks, folks, we have, we have two more, we have the board application. All right, on the. Seventh application. Of seven forty-seven countryway, a zero punctuary requesting a permanent finding request of NGL forty ways. And or any relief of the board of appeals and grants, two lots of seven forty-seven countryway. Continue from our office twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, herein. Name and address for the record, please.
Okay, so Attorney Jeff Delisi, Arberg Delisi in Paris, on behalf of the applicant, I'm also here with Greg Morse, Morse Engineering. In the air.
Are we still with the same plan?
So if I might, the answer is yes, but I have some verbiage to go along with that.
Sure, okay, no, I just wanted to make sure that we have the same.
Yeah, I've said nothing new was submitted.
Yeah, all right, fair.
So I missed the last hearing, I was on vacation.
I'm good.
And. I had an opportunity to view. The meeting. So just to back up, and to make certain, because not everybody is on Zoom. And see what we're looking at, and sure they're aware, we have a property that consists of. One lot and one parcel that is merged.
Right.
Okay, and what we're proposing to do is to create two lots that each have. Sixty feet of frontage, so long countryway, we have a total frontage distance of a hundred and twenty feet.
Right.
So. I think that the, from what I saw, the board is probably satisfied. That we need the requirement of lot area for each lot, that we need the minimum requirement of frontage for each lot. What section six ten point two says, and where I think that the board left off with kind of a question mark. Is that when two fifty foot frontage lots are being created at the same time. And when they join one another, that a, a common driveway pursuant to the provisions of section seven twenty. Shall access both lots so as to not have. Two curb cuts within one hundred feet of one another, right?
Yes.
So. The issue that we're grappling with is the common driveway question, because this property. Has a feature that the zoning by law did not envision, I'm sure, when it was created. And that is that the house that's on lot A currently has access by an easement. That begins hundreds of feet down the road, re-parcels away, so, re-lots away. And runs behind the homes and accesses the house on lot A. So we are going to have access on lot A.
Right.
So one thing I wanted to clarify to the board is that we're not proposing. A second curb cut, so on the entire hundred and twenty. Linear feet of frontage for this merged parcel. We are only proposing, and we would certainly accept the condition that there'll only be one curb cut. That we think meets the purposes of the bylaw that's articulated in the provision that said common driveway. You know, because.
I just want to.
Yep.
Before you get to the argument, I just want to understand what you, what, so the plan is shown as a curb cut along the, of long countryway. On this contiguous hundred and twenty linear feet where the lots are located.
Right.
Are you proposing to omit that and have the single curb cut, which is the existing fifteen foot way? Which is on countryway further down, be the driveway, the single curb cut driveway that services both lot A. And both lot B?
No.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to understand, is this factual? Okay.
So I'm trying to be direct, but it is a little bit of a complex issue, so. Number one, trying to avoid the concept of having to go and get the common driveway permit. And the reason why we're trying to avoid that is because under section seven twenty. The provisions for common driveway require them to be sixteen feet wide and a paved surface.
Right.
We don't think, especially listening to some of the comments in the neighborhood, that that serves anybody. And so what we would propose is that, that we would be perfectly. Content with the condition that says lot A is accessed as it currently is. And that the driveway that's shown on the plan.
Yeah.
Be located such that it's solely on lot B.
Right.
And access is only lot B.
Right, so you're going to move that driveway so you can create one driveway for lot B, use the existing lot, driveway for lot A. So this plan will effectively change.
Right.
This is, plan isn't correct.
Well, it would be conditional.
Yeah, well, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a condition, these will be the driver, the plan's correct otherwise, you're slow.
Yes.
You would move, you would move the driveway in such, such a manner.
So a couple of things, so number one, we think that that would be beneficial, because there, as I, I believe in that butter pointed out. There is a driveway directly to the north within a few feet of the existing access that is shown on the plan. And by move, by eliminating that access and moving it to the left, or north. It would, it would be a more safe situation. But basically putting the driveway over on lot two.
On lot B.
Lot B.
Right, because where, where it's shown on the plan currently is across from. The, the broader property and their driveways, which makes it.
Yes.
Or could make it, which, right, that's the. That's what they pointed out.
Yeah, so that's, that's that, too. Any drainage issues that are triggered as a result would have to go to stormwater review.
Yeah.
And if for some reason there's no jurisdiction for stormwater, we would consent to a condition that requires it. When driveway is, you know, prior to the driveway being constructed on the. you know, prior to the driveway being constructed on lot B. So, we want to make sure that we do this in a manner that does not increase the velocity or rate of surface water that runs off the property.
Right.
Then what does now? And we want to do it in a manner that's safer countryway. So, there was a discussion with the board at the last meeting as to whether the board could do anything other than a common driveway, given the way that the language of the bylaw is written. And one of the things I wanted to point out to the board is that in section in section six ten point two B, there is a provision about conditions of approval. And it's the fourth paragraph. And it says that the board may impose such conditions, safeguards, and limitations as it may be reasonably appropriate at the neighborhood or otherwise serve the purpose of this bylaw. And so, I, I think that that paragraph will allow the board to condition an approval that requires that lot A use its current existing access, easement access, and that requires that the applicant remove and relocate the existing driveway such that it is entirely on lot B, ensuring only lot B. And that's pretty much it. I know it's, it's a handful. I'm sure folks will have some questions. But that's what we're trying to accomplish. And Greg has done a plan, which he only has one copy of, we came here with, that shows that, contains that note, if you wanted to look at it. We just didn't submit it in time.
I'm just sorry. Uh, board. You want Bob first or you want to go first?
Bobby, yeah. No, not really. I mean, I can, I can definitely appreciate Attorney Delisi's argument, and I think it's a good one in the sense that it does minimize the impact on the neighborhood and it minimizes new development. You know, there's no point, seems to be, in arbitrarily replacing an access drive that already exists so that people are used to using. And I'm presuming the public safety, even though this is a long stretch and it doesn't really say how, how improved it is on the plan that I'm looking at. But I assume public safety finds it adequate to access lot A. Certainly, the new driveway we're talking about would be considered adequate to access lot B. So, you know, I'm, I'm kind of, kind of in favor of going where we're going.
I, I mean, the, the address situation is gonna get probably a little funky.
The what?
The address, the address. So, seven forty-seven.
Now, the lot is on the street. Let's say seven forty-seven B.
Seven.
Eighty, and I don't know, where does it go? At seven eighty, it's for yourself.
Well, the bottom line is that it has to be something that is sufficient for the emergency services. So, the fire department, that basically is gonna dictate that.
Right. But so they can identify it easily. I did have one related question, which is the current easement to lot A. Does it service? I can't, I don't see from the plan, is it servicing any other properties effectively? Or is it really just an easement for lot A?
It, it services properties as it's, as it's approaching lot A.
Right, okay.
Lot A is a separate parcel that is essentially not lot A. If you looked at the record plan, I would see that the short answer to your question is, it does. Between countryway and lot A.
Yeah, so I'm trying, is anybody else using this fifty existing fifteen-foot way that services lot A or other people using it for the same purpose that lot A is?
Yes.
Okay, so, so to sort of even further modif, not modify, but further sort of all, all the authority. Right, we can't remove the current fifteen-foot way in its entirety, right? And replace it with a single curb cut that addresses lot A and lot B because it services the properties, right? So, it's going to continue to exist regardless.
Yes.
So, so the question then becomes, right? Whether that, right, services all of this lot A and lot B, right? That's one way to do it, or whether, whether we grant you a special permit to pass a second, a curb cut, a curb cut to service lot B, which would be the sole curb cut on a hundred and twenty linear feet.
The sole curb.
Right, on that hundred and twenty linear feet, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and one additional thing I just wanted to is that the alternative to this whole scenario
Yep.
is to modify the application such that we're only seeking one fifty-foot frontage permit right now.
Right.
And then in the future, come back for another. Because then we would not even be required to a common driveway permit. But that's not something that we want to do.
Well, yeah, and, and then you're asking us to put something in fifty foot, five thousand fifty foot permit.
Right.
And that hasn't taught me that of issues. And there's a couple of people on board, but.
Well, I think, I think the bylaw is very clear. And I think we're overcomplicating it by saying, well, because this, that driveway serves that house in this state. It was here, it's a lot there. You now want to create two fifty-foot lots. That means that, you know, this, you know, this, you know, takes, takes effect that where to go? When, you know, any two, you know, so-called fifty-foot lots are approved at the same time, then share it with the on-lot line, the common driveway, you know, shall utilize so that there's an actual one curb cut per one hundred. We're gonna do one curb cut. It's gonna be a common driveway. It serves both lots. That easement can still exist.
It can't.
If, it can still exist, but this has to be the sole access to that property.
So, under the design standards of common driveways, when a common driveway is created, that has to be the sole means of access to the property. Which means that for all intents and purposes, the utilization of the easement, while it might still be shown on a plan, it might exist in real life, the, the benefited property owner won't be able to make use of it at all.
Yeah, that's what he said.
Correct.
Right.
Right.
So.
That's property, my house divided, the property and two fifty-foot lots, and then these folks take it back.
But the whole purpose, I mean, the, the, the beauty of the language that we have here is that it's actually saying, stating the purpose as to why it is that a common driveway is being required. And that is so that you have one curb cut for the two lots being created. The scenario that I'm suggesting is one curb cut over that one hundred and twenty foot of linear frontage. So, and the way that you can get to recognizing the reality of the situation, the fact that this property does have divvied access is by looking at the condition language that says you can condition it to achieve the objective of the bylaw. And clearly, the objectives of the bylaw are to not have two curb cuts within a hundred feet.
We don't have two curb cuts, and in no circumstance we have two curb cuts. Feet, I don't see.
Right. So, there's no reason, we're not proposing a common driveway because we're not proposing a second curb cut within, on this frontage.
So, 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 so I think, and, and I hear what, what you're saying, I hear what he's saying. I think, I go back to my earlier comment, which is this easement pre-exists. It serves a lot of other functions, right? So, it's one, it's one curb cut because it, it's serving these other props, right, you're hearing, it's serving these other properties as well, right? So, it is not like it's a situation where this is the only property it serves. We can eliminate this, right, and have the single curb cut as intended to serve these two properties, right? Something has to happen here. Or, right, or to fulfill the requirement, which is sort of the original, you create a, you use this and you extend an easement, right, to lot B, right, from lot A to lot B, right? So, you use this and you go here, because otherwise, right, what are you doing? All you're doing is during a hundred, here in this case, a hundred and twenty linear feet, you're putting in one cut. Why does it need to necessarily be double-wide and serve both properties when it can just serve this property and this needed act thirty continues to serve this property? You are causing no more harm. I mean, I'm just summarizing the argument.
The bylaw states that when two fifty-foot created at the same time and they have an adjoining property line, any common driveway shall be used.
And I think his argument is that contemplates a situation where there is no current access, right? So, right, that's, that's the assumption, right? And you're trying to create, to serve both lots with one purpose. This lot is already being served, right? So, if.
This lot's like being served.
This, yeah, this lot, lot A, right? And, and as long as they agree to say lot A is only going to go here, and then they redraw a driveway that's to lot B, how is that? Again, I'm just summarizing the argument and, you know, you, you, you're, you know, you're, you're obviously gonna come up where we're even come out of this. But how is that different, right, than, than now burdening, right, these folks by saying, I have to create a bigger driveway here, right, that serves these two lots, right? And then these people can't go out this way even though they have needed access, right? So, you're taking away their, their existing easement, right, for whatever that's worth. And, and you're now, you know, creating a, a bigger situation here, right? Again, these aren't gonna connect, right, the way that they're proposing it verbally, is that there's the.
No, he's, he's proposing a driveway over here.
Correct, correct, correct. No, we agree, yeah, we should agree to the facts, yeah.
I'm stating what I'm like. The situation is they're creating two fifty-foot frontage lots.
Sure.
Because this exists. Uh, you know, I think this, the existence of this is irrelevant. Now, because this exists to serve this lot. Now they've changed the rules. They've separated them. Now they've made two different lots. And now this rule falls and it comes into the.
Right, and then, and then, and again, what Attorney Delisi said, what if they just forget it, they make that lot? They're not asking for anything. Then they come back, they make a separate lot, then they're not making two fifty-foot lots. They make a lot. Right, there's a, there's a way to do that they do this, right? That is onerous, but arguably, it circumvents, circumvents that argument. Right, that's, I mean, that's, that's passing. We're trying to, we're trying to get.
That's exactly the point. But, but Chris, I just want to try and see if I can explain to make you feel more comfortable, the language that requires the common driveway. Says that the reason why the common driveway is required is so that, like, just let me, let me put it.
No, I.
So that there is a maximum of one curb cut.
And all we're proposing is one curb cut.
And so are we.
It's not any more than one curb cut.
I, I don't see.
I don't think it's applicable, and I think that you can condition it to require only one curb cut and meet the purpose of the bylaw stated. Which is you can only have one curb cut on that one hundred and twenty feet.
Because we.
How does that apply to come down?
No, because he doesn't, he doesn't permit both of them at the same, he doesn't go from special permit to both at the same time to this one, one fifty-foot lot.
Right now, I'm here on one, on two fifty-foot frontage lots at the same time. Uh, we could request a continuance, modify the plan to request a single fifty-foot frontage lot and a parcel which is to be permitted in the future. What's the point? When we can do this and achieve the objectives of the bylaw and create a safer circumstance, then what is there now?
Well, no, then, well, yeah, safer circumstance if they put it there, right?
If, if this, if this goes.
Because there's.
If this goes further by a lot and that's.
Right. Comes up here, and there's a driveway there, right? So, so that's, that's the issue, right? They can, his argument, I'm just restating his argument, is that if they, if they move it over here, it's not safer because it's not directly opposed to a driveway across the street.
Same right next to the existing driveway by the, right now.
Well, if it comes up the middle, is there a driveway right across from it?
No.
I'm sorry.
No, that's not what he's talking about. He's talking, he's talking about using that existing, where it's based right there.
Right, Greg, Greg, Greg has a plan, and I'm showing you what, just to.
You want to put it up there first?
Sure.
I'll, I'll use the plan that we had submitted.
Sure.
I knew you'd draw it. What, so what we're talking about is just a simple condition that lot B would be serviced by its own new driveway on its frontage. So, that would have new driveway on lot B. Existing house number seven forty-seven would access, and the condition would be that its sole means of access would be over the existing driveway where it currently is. Right now, if you punch into your GPS in your car and you say, I want to go to seven forty-seven hundred way, it takes you to this location.
Yes.
That's where the house address is posted down the street for emergency purposes. And that's how you access. Lot B will have a house address that's, you know, closer to, you know, seven twenty-three, you know, which would be posted down here for emergency purposes there. But this house number wouldn't change on a, on a driveway scenario. Right now, it's house number seven forty-seven. That's how the records have always been. That takes you to this location in this access.
So, let me ask you a different, but maybe helpful question, which is, assuming you put the driveway on lot B, where is the nearest other driveway on this side, on this, its side of the street?
So, so we would close off the driveway, there's a lot A entirely. So, it's in excess of sixty feet of frontage. Yeah, in this direction. The driveway for this house is on this side of the house.
Right there, so.
Here to there. It's closer than any other driveway.
No, but you're saying across the street.
That's what you just asked.
No, no, on, on the same side of the street, so on the linear.
This one.
Yeah, so the, on the linear, because remember the, the, what we're looking at, so we're looking at two different things, right? There's a safety issue across the street, right, you have a driveway across the street, right? You generally don't like that, but there's a hundred and twenty linear feet driveway within a hundred, a hundred feet of each other. So, in other words, on the other side, is there a driveway?
So, that's the lot that's right to the, right, yeah, down.
So, this, this lot here, again, the driveway's on this side, you'd have more than fifty feet from a driveway on lot B to the existing driveway.
All right, okay, so I'm just, right, it's, it's another.
Another added benefit of this is this becomes a single driveway or pavement width for a single driveway is typically around ten feet wide versus a common driveway is typically around sixteen feet wide. So, it's less impervious there, it's less drainage. Lot B will ultimately need a stormwater permit when someone designs a house to build on it. We're not trying to circumvent drainage issues here. It will have its own drainage system when the time is appropriate. It's less rough. It's a better scenario with this old driveway.
All right, we have some people on, on video. So, Jean, pull somebody on video. Patricia, her.
Hi, Patricia Lambert. I'm speaking as a private citizen. It's a public hearing, and we cannot see the plan. I know it's pretty controversial. Are you gonna come in and as a scenic roadway, since countryway is a scenic road?
Yes, would be required. Yes, we'd be required to when a curb cut application is made.
Okay, thank you. And can we see this new plan that you've devised tonight, is that possible?
We haven't submitted a new plan.
Okay.
It's just, it would be a condition of where the driveway, certainly the same plan, the condition of where the driveway would be located. Is that's their proposal, they could theoretically submit a new plan, re- rehear it, but.
Okay, so the driveway that you're proposing is right next to. An existing driveway which you're gonna close up, is that what I heard?
No, so so on Country Way, on these two lots, Lot A and Lot B, there's a, there's a dirt driveway that they put, they proposed.
That they created.
Yes, they're gonna abandon that, right, and they're going to put it, their proposal is to put a driveway solely. To service and solely on Lot B. Right, so in that sixty foot to the right of the plan, right, basically in the middle.
Okay.
To the east.
To the east.
Yeah, eastish, yeah. Cause north is that way.
Alright, that's my only question, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh next, Christopher.
Hi, uh thank you, hi, um Chris Diorio, uh seven nineteen Country Way.
Sure.
I do, I I I was at the last meeting, I I like the direction that they're going in here, uh with the narrower um driveway. But, you know, there's still, you know, I think we're still dealing with some issues of. Um you know, it's still gonna lead to a house being constructed on top of this hill. Um you know, it's clearing of the forest, yeah, on the side of a hill that's just has kind of notorious water issues and. You know, it's still, you're still adding a lot of um impervious surface um with this new driveway. Um so. You know, I think I mentioned this before, um. Uh as kind of an alternative um scenario for the zoning board to approve would be. Um maybe keeping the lot lines where they are. And I guess this is kind of just kind of expounding a bit on what they're trying to do with the two separate driveways, but. Keep the lot lines where they are and just simply um. Give the rear lot that has the house now a variance from lot frontage. And then if the if the lots stay where they are, you can have the new house just kind of built up along the street. And you don't even have to have that driveway going up back into the into the forest there. Um then that also eliminates your common driveway issue.
Yep.
Uh, yeah, and and again, we have an unbuiltable lot and we have, they have to then meet the various standards. And it'd be a situation where we created the uh the unbuiltable lot because there was no frontage. So that, so so I appreciate what you're saying, um that's not how this is set up. Um so I don't know if we can do that. Um any other comments in the room?
Nope.
Okay, and thank you, Tricia. Okay, I think I know where you're gonna come, I am, we're gonna, we're we're, I think we're, we're gonna take a vote on this one.
Well.
So. So, yeah, right.
This is a vote for a.
Well, it would be. Well, it'd be a vote for the special permit. Right, with, right, and the special permit.
No, no, there's no, there's no finding that's required, it's only a special, only a special permit.
Yeah.
Um. And it would be to approve the plan if you wanted to make any conditions or or reject the plan.
Right, it's either to approve or reject the plan with, and arguably would be with the condition, right?
But if the condition is a common driveway and unfortunately the provision, then that's something like, in other words. We didn't propose a common driveway and I think is not, the reason why we didn't propose a common driveway is because you are not the permitting granting authority for common driveways. So um. In the past, we've never, we've ne- we don't show common driveways on fifty foot frontage plans because we don't know where the plan board wants them, what specifications are gonna be and so forth. So I just wanted to, uh as you're considering this, I'm looking at you, Chris, like, as you're considering this, like, think about that because it's not. You're voting to approve the plan and then you're deciding if you want conditions.
And this will be, right, this will be a vote to approve the fifty foot frontage lots with conditions. Which would be.
Either, right, well, it would be either a common driveway.
Right.
Fundamentally, it's either a common driveway or a driveway that would service only Lot B. Right, that's because you're, to your point, to our discussion here, right, I think those are the two. Uh two choices, right? So. So that's the question, right, and I think we are to the point where the only question is. The driveway, I think we we agree with the division of lots. Right?
And the division of lots, the 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 areas of fifty foot lots themselves are are fine.
Right, so 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 the question is, so before I make a motion. Right, I think we will, I think just as a matter of reasonable, or before anybody makes a motion. Um. You want a common driveway, right? I I'm just, I'm just asking, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but we have to, if we have a vote, right, we have a vote.
Or no.
Well, the answer, you can vote no.
Well, that's what I was gonna, that's what I was gonna say, what's the standard on this, is it a majority or?
Majority.
No, no, it's not a majority, this is a three number four, and a special permit requires three out of three votes or it fails.
I believe. A variance requires three out of three.
There'd be, there'd be uh.
Yeah, honestly, I'm gonna find this one where.
It varies, I know it requires three out of three, yeah.
It's set.
Those are voting methods.
It's set forth in General Law Chapter um forty eight, section. Eleven, I think, and I can find it right now, but it it's gonna say a super majority of a of. Let me just see.
Forty A or forty?
Section eleven, forty A. Maybe not. Maybe it's twelve, hold on, might be section twelve.
Or is there any?
Membership rules.
Membership.
No, not twelve, I think ten.
Um.
Oh, it's section nine.
Alright.
Special permits.
Yes. My God. Should the microphone turn on for us? A special permit issued by a special permit granting authority shall require two thirds voter boards with more than five members. So, hold on, a vote of at least four members of the five member board and a unanimous vote of a three member board, you are correct, sir.
No, I still don't see where you see that, but I knew I was correct.
I gave up, I I found it, I read it. You're 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 incorrect, it's a two thirds vote of the five member board, we are a three number voting board, so it requires.
Three of the three.
It requires three out of.
And 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 that's why, just like, just just like digressing slightly, just that's why in in your zoning by law section eight ten, it's only a finding. It used to be such a permit, in two thousand and eleven, they switched it to a finding, which switched the threshold amount of votes necessary to. Carry that vote from three to two, and that has uh proven to be handy a few times.
So you're acting, you're acting.
We're asking for a special permit which requires three of the three votes.
Declare.
To prevail.
To prevail, alright, um.
I'm alright with it, John, uh Russell.
Alright, we'll play some Queen music.
Yeah, exactly, okay. You you can get okay with it?
I I can't, I I think, you know, looking at the. The alternatives that came back and, you know, did one at a time, it's not gonna end well.
Well, and and again, I think we're trying to, some of the community's concerned in purpose area, right, if you do it this way.
I I.
You know, maybe helpful that.
I don't, doesn't give me the warm and fuzzy, but it's better than the alternative. I'll give you that one, okay.
Um so. So on the applicant's. Motion for a special permit. Uh this is red cone, seven forty seven Country Way and Zero Country Way, requesting this special permit. You're going to the NGL forty eights and section and B of the zoning bylaws and all of the work that goes with me granted. Create two lots at seven forty seven Country Way constituent pursuant to the plan by. Morse. Well, sure. For Morse Engineering, uh dated June thirty of twenty twenty three. With the condition. That Lot A. Is serviced solely by the existing fifty foot way. And report easement in the book two one five five, page four oh eight. And that a driveway be constructed solely on Lot B servicing only Lot B. That the board grant the special permit. I think that's it.
And that uh the 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 existing driveway. Uh over Lot A. Is relocated, you know, is abandoned or discontinued.
Right, but well, the. Well, the existing, right. The existing dirt driveway, yeah, to to the existing dirt driveway uh on Lot A. Uh is going into Lot B um is abandoned, right?
Discontinued.
It's discontinued.
That's fine.
Alright.
I second it.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright. Thank you, alright. Thank you, sir.
Support the argument.
Yeah, it's, well, it's, we're trying to do the right thing by every time.
I I didn't want it to come back to the separate application, but that's like.
It's a, you mean, what?
I mean, don't you, don't you like someone who already made it, I'm gonna come back.
Well, but it forces the issue, right?
No, it's just sure that the alternative is, right?
Right. Very fair.
I.
And I, we, I understand.
Uh I do think I had an easy one.
You have a third one.
But wait, we're not.
I don't, we gotta go.
We got two things to go.
Okay.
Alright, on the eighth application. You know, you got another one coming up. Um of uh.
I have the other one. You wanna vote that right now?
It's just. Ball very true, hold on. Yeah, hold on. Yeah, so I can, I can place it, hold on, then I'll pull it up.
Oh, that's fantastic, thank you. Third one.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I didn't. I haven't, no, I'm having like with my basics.
Yeah.
When, alright, that's uh. Oh, oh, sorry. Alright, so I need, one one hundred and forty drove.
That's uh.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for, forty seven pound and a half, I bought a twelve brake drive. Definitely. Right, so. We still have forty seven.
So we have, so we're, we still have forty seven.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm confused, that's fine.
We have, cause I'm hoping you have.
We have forty seven. So on the eighth application of Mark, yes, I'm sorry, but.
Oh, he jumped, jumped.
Alright, you wanna skip to the additional business, which is the zoning or zoning relief extension? I did these meetings. Alright, um so we have a request uh for zoning relief extension in the week's local, uh forty seven poundway extension respectively, requesting an extension of the special permit finding.
No, this is, it's just an extension.
Extension for nine, right?
Yeah.
From October third, twenty twenty three to October third, twenty twenty four. And it's currently September, I'll be free.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh I I I moved to approve the extension to October third, twenty twenty four. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, guys, thank you so much.
So it's just one, yeah, yeah, two.
I'll stop the race.
Alright, um and then our new application and technical last order business. Uh the application of Mark, David, twelve thirty, six, two, nine, the special permit finding according to the NGL forty eight, section six, section eight, ten point two C, and where you kind of sit your zoning bylaws. Uh to raise reconstructing extended pre-existing non-conforming residential accessory structure located at twelve grades avenue. Uh that's the key, the August tenth.
Looks like the dog ate it.
Um say. There's a new, alright, Mr. Mayor, you.
I think you got the memo from Bob.
Yes. Yes.
Well, I know.
I know, it's almost similar. So this plan is not changed from the last plan that we looked at, is that correct? Alright, so so you didn't change the plan. Okay, so I think we've had a memo from Bob, uh we've all looked at it, um I think we're in agreement. That uh, so I will make a motion, I should do. Alright, any questions? Any any questions online, any questions in the room? Alright, this has already been through the hearing. So I will make a motion on the application of Mark, David, twelve thirty, uh Graves Avenue, Citriot, Nass, requesting special permit signing according to the NDL forty eight, section six. And section eight, ten point two C and or eight, ten, with city zoning by law. Uh to raise reconstructing extended pre-existing non-conforming residential accessory structure located at twelve grades avenue. Uh pursuant the plan by Ross. Uh Ross Engineering, right, dated July nineteenth. Driver life panel, yeah, yeah, dated uh July nineteen, twenty twenty three, yep. Um that uh the board find that uh such uh construction will not introduce any new non-conformations to the extent that it intensifies and makes it not. For any such uh intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood and that the board may have special permits. Second, one in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, we have one last set of businesses. Yes, uh we have the approval. Yeah, approval of the minutes in the May eighth, June fifteenth, and five thirty meetings. Of uh of those members that were at those meetings. I will, I will just call call a vote, um I move that we approve all three sets of me minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, to the extent that you are there committing, uh we're not a voting member necessarily. Alright, I think that's it, and with that. I'm moving to adjourn.
Okay.
On favor?
Aye.